Bransfield, I'm First Selectman in Portland. And thank you, everyone, for coming. We have a presentation tonight. And I have some written comments. And I also have the opportunity, of course, for the public to speak tonight. So first, I'm going to start with why we're here. There'll be a notice that was given to us in terms of this being a public information meeting. And then I'll read the legal notice of the public hearing as well, just so that everybody knows why we're here and what we're doing. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Section 16-50G of the Connecticut General Statutes of a Public Information Meeting to be held in the Mary Flood Room at the Portland Library, 20 Freestone Avenue, Portland, Connecticut, on Wednesday, September 17, 2014, beginning at 7:00 p.m. The meeting will be in furtherance of a technical report on file with the Town of Portland for a proposal by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, AT&amp;T, to construct a wireless telecommunications tower facility at the property near Collins Hill Road, assessors mat 51 lot 8, with access by way of 9 Rosehill Road in the Town of Portland. The tower would be located in the central portion of this property and is proposed to extend to an overall height of 85 feet above grade. Proposed camouflaging will resemble an evergreen tree. The property is an approximately 4.29 acre parcel which is currently undeveloped, adjoining the existing Quarry Ridge Golf Course. The facility is proposed to allow AT&amp;T to provide wireless service in this area of Portland. At this meeting, AT&amp;T's representatives will discuss the need for the facility, the location of existing surrounding facilities, and identify the review of potential environmental effects of the proposed facility. The public informational meeting is being conducted at the request of the Town of Portland in advance of a formal application to be filed with the State of Connecticut Siting Council, which has jurisdiction over wireless tower facilities. Now, we also noticed this as a public hearing, so that everyone would know this was being held. And this legal notice was in the River East News Bulletin. And it's a legal notice of Public Hearing Board of Selectmen for Wednesday, September 17, 2014, at 7:00 in the Portland Library. And this is pursuant to Section 506 of the Portland Town Charter. A public hearing and information session will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, September 17, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. to provide residents' opportunity to comment, both orally and in writing, on the proposed wireless telecommunications tower facility to potentially be located at 9 Rosehill Road. And this was dated the 27th of August, 2014. Attest Susan Bransfield, First Selectman. Now, I do have some written comments, but I think what we'll do is have the presentation first, and then the written comments, and then that gives the audience time to put their thoughts together and come forward. It is being recorded tonight, the session, so we ask when you do make your comments that you come up to the podium, so that you can be seen and heard, as is customary. We ask that you state your name and your address for the recording secretary, Laura Sienna, who's taking the minutes for us. So at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our presenters tonight, and they're going to do self-introductions, and we're going to learn a little bit more about this facility. So let's start with you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abigail Jewitt, and I'm with the External Affairs Division of AT&amp;T, based here in Connecticut. And I just wanted to welcome you here this evening, and thank you for coming out. The purpose of the forum this evening is to start off and give you as much information as we have about the site. And we're going to have our citing attorney come up and do a PowerPoint presentation should last about 10, 15 minutes or so. And then we have various experts within the different fields responsible for citing for cell towers. So when you have questions, we have the right people here in the room to hopefully be able to answer some of those questions for you. The purpose really is to gather information from you and from the town. We want to thank the First Selectmen for allowing us and requesting this forum here tonight, because what we're really hoping for is an exchange of information that's not only helpful to you, but helpful to us as we go forward. This is really the start of the process, and really information gathering, both on our end as well as for your end. So I know we have kind of an abbreviated amount of time here this evening, because there is a Board of Selectmen meeting afterwards. So I'm going to have Lucia come up and do the presentation. And then afterwards, as the First Selectmen sit, we'll take as many questions from you as you like. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucia Kyokyo. I'm with Cuddy &amp; Feder, and we represent AT&amp;T. As Abby said, we'll go through the process of citing cell towers in the State of Connecticut. And hopefully, this will work from here. Very good. So we're going to talk about our facility, our proposed facility, and the process, and answer any questions that may come up. So you heard from Abby Jewitt. I'm here from Cuddy &amp; Feder. Mr. Dan Goulet is the radio frequency engineer for AT&amp;T. We have Steve Quinn from SmartLink instead of Adam Braylard. Jay Feible from Chapel Engineering, he is the engineer that designed the facility for AT&amp;T. And Michael Libertine of All Points Technology, the visual consultant. So a little bit about wireless infrastructure and how federal, state, and municipal entities have a role in wireless infrastructure. So carriers like AT&amp;T conduct searches in areas where they've identified a need for a facility. A need being an area where there's not reliable wireless service for their customers. The state's citing policies and municipal wireless facility preferences typically include co-location on existing facilities. So the state statute encourages tower sharing and co-location on existing facilities. So the first thing that AT&amp;T will do is identify this area of need, and then try and identify any existing structures that they can use to fulfill that need. If none of those are available, if they've exhausted all the existing structures, typically you need a tall structure, then they'll look for a piece of property where they can cite a tower facility to meet their needs. With respect to jurisdiction, local municipalities retain jurisdiction over attachments to water tanks, rooftop sites, and so forth. And here in Connecticut, the Connecticut Siting Council has jurisdiction over new tower facilities like the one we're proposing. And there are also some federal laws and policies that govern local and state regulations with respect to wireless facilities to ensure that these facilities and the infrastructure can be built, so that reliable services are available. So the application process in Connecticut starts with, as Abby said, this is the beginning of the process. So we started with the submission of what we call a technical report to the Town of Portland. And that started our municipal consultation. So we haven't been to the Siting Council. We're not going to the Siting Council until this consultation period is done. So we submit the technical report, and we consult with the Town of Portland. Then if AT&amp;T decides to proceed to the Siting Council, they would submit an application to the Siting Council. The Siting Council will schedule a hearing here in the Town of Portland. There's actually quite a bit of notice that's involved in that process. So when we file our application with the Siting Council, there'll be notice in the paper, notice will go to the abutters, that we intend to file. Once it's on file with the Siting Council, they'll schedule a public hearing here in the town, and that also will be something that would be noticed. They'll conduct a site visit. They'll have an evidentiary hearing in the afternoon, and a public hearing at night. And there are several ways and opportunities to get involved in that Siting Council process. So here, we're just a little bit more on the municipal consultation process. So we submitted our technical report in April. We followed up with a visual analysis in August. In some cases, you know, we meet with town officials. At this point, we had been in contact with your First Selectmen. We had talked about a balloon float, the visual materials. And then the town requested that we come here tonight and provide information about it and present it at an information meeting. So this is a little bit tough to read, but I'll just give you a quick overview of what you're looking at here. Wireless demand. As I'm sure a lot of you that have wireless devices have realized that people are depending on their wireless devices more and more, whether it's for personal or business, or even safety reasons. So what these statistics are showing you is that the demand is increasing exponentially for reliable wireless services. And the chart on the right, those are exabytes per month. So this is the amount of data that people are using per month. And you can see from 2013 to 2018, it's gone from 1.5 to a predicted 15.9. That's a lot of data. It's a lot of demand. And the carriers are looking to try and meet that demand, because people are relying so much on their wireless services. This is just some of the things that I'm sure you know already, what wireless service provides. Voice, text, E911, data. You know, everyone's talking about being able to download at faster speeds, whether it's for personal or professional. M2M stands for machine-to-machine. We're seeing a lot of this now within the healthcare industry, where the wireless service is used, for example, if it's available, if there's an accident, and the EMT goes to the scene, they may be able to send information right to the hospital. So that way, when the patient gets to the hospital, they're all set up, and they know what's going on. Just an example of some of the machine-to-machine uses in the healthcare industry. Transportation, there's, you know, other economic sectors. A lot of times, I hear about retailers that use wireless services to help them regulate their inventory. And of course, the public safety applications. You know, you hear it all the time, anecdotes about people being lost or having, being in an accident, and being able to call and get help. So this chart shows, let me get my ... So here's our proposed site. And what these little balloons are showing are existing infrastructure in and around the area. And right around the proposed site are existing towers or infrastructure. If we move to our next slide. Thanks, Mike. So what you're looking at here is what we call a radio frequency propagation plot. And this is the result of analysis by AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineer. So here you have the proposed site. These indicate existing sites around the area, and those are just site numbers for AT&amp;T. And what you're seeing on the green and the kind of orangey color is signal level. Green represents the reliable signal level, or reliable service. Orange, the next best level. The white areas, there may be signal there, but it's not reliable. What does that mean? That means you may be able to make a call, but you may not be able to hold that call. You most likely won't be able to sustain any kind of data usage in that area. So if we go to our next slide. So what you're seeing here, it's the same setup. Here's the proposed site, and here's the predicted coverage from that site. So this is showing you what the anticipated reliable service would be from that particular facility. Can we go to the next one, Mike? And this is just the same as before, but at a different frequency. AT&amp;T has several frequencies. And then if you just go to the next one, Mike, thanks. And then just the next, thank you. So this is what, this is a terrain plot, and this kind of helps explain a little bit about wireless service. So here's our proposed site. As I said earlier, the carriers typically look for existing infrastructure before they propose a new tower facility. In this case, there's a CLMP route right here. So these are three, these represent three CLMP structures. So first thing AT&amp;T did, let's take a look at these structures. And the RF engineers analyzed these structures and determined that because of their location, you can see here that they're kind of in a valley. If this represents 400 feet, and you've got like 300 feet, and then 200 feet, because they're so low in the valley, they're not tall enough to provide the service. The RF signal won't penetrate through this area, so it kind of gets stuck in there. The other location that they looked at was here, which is the parking lot for the clubhouse. However, our property owner preferred the location that was selected here. So what we're showing you basically is, you know, the reason why the CLMP structures don't work is due to their low elevation in relation to the proposed site. That's fine, Mike, we can just ... So this is a little hard to see. That says site. So here's our site, as far as the aerial map is concerned. So this is an overview. The black line that I'm kind of going around here is the proposed access route, which is an existing golf path through the golf course. And then our proposed site is here on this adjacent piece of property to the golf course, which is a little over four acres in size. If you go to the next one, Mike, thank you. So the proposal is, so here's a little close-up of where it is. So it's, that would be the access drive. It would be a 50 by 50-foot area. And the monopole, or the monopine, I should say, is located here in the middle of that area. And it's sort of in the middle of this piece of property. I think there's, can you go back one, I think, Mike, or no? No? Okay, thanks. So the proposal includes a monopine that would be 85 feet tall. Some branches would stick up a few more feet, so that, you know, it looks more like a tree. A tree just doesn't stop at the top. Antennas would be located at about 80 feet centerline. It's designed for co-location by other carriers. As I said earlier, the state statutes require and encourage co-location. So if we're proposing a new tower facility in Connecticut, we have to design it so that other people can share it. The compound would consist of an equipment shelter, unmanned equipment. The shelter is about 12 feet by 16 feet. A backup generator. And the entire compound would be enclosed by an eight-foot chain link fence. So one of the, when we applied to the Connecticut Siting Council, we would be seeking a certificate of public need and environmental compatibility. So what that means is we have to demonstrate to the Siting Council that there's a need for the facility, which we talked about earlier with the plots. And we also have to do our due diligence with respect to environmental impacts. We have to look at several different environmental factors. And one of the factors that we have to do is we have to demonstrate that our facility meets all the applicable federal and state regulations with respect to RF energy. So what I have here on this slide is a little bit of information about, if you want more information about it, with respect to the RF energy. But in general, when you have a facility, such as a tower we propose, the RF energy associated with that facility decreases exponentially as you move away from the facility. So for this particular facility, the RF engineer did a calculation, and this is based on the federal guidelines. And the federal guidelines are a worst-case scenario. So the federal guidelines say, take your facility, highest power, point the antennas down, which we wouldn't do, because if you're pointing the antennas down, then the signal's going into the ground, and we want the signal to go out to the horizon to provide service. And do this calculation, and make sure that you're not at 100%. So we did that calculation for AT&amp;T for our proposal, and that's the height of the antenna, and there's a lot of input. And we're at 12.36% of that 100%. So we're at a fraction of what the maximum exposure level would be, based on the federal And one of the other things we looked at is visibility. And this is a viewshed map. It's a little hard to read, but the areas that are this orangey color are predict, areas of predicted visibility. And it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to see the entire thing. Most often, particularly with a facility that's not very tall, as these facilities go, you may see the top portion of it. And then we have some numbers here. I don't know if you can see them, but the numbers are in this area. And what they represent are locations where photos were taken. So we flew a balloon, and you can see the balloon is here, right? So that's Bartlett Street. We flew a balloon, and then created what we call a photo simulation. So here is what the facility would look like as a tree from that location. And the next one, the arrow is here. And then, if you see, the facility is here. Same thing, the arrow. So that would be the balloon, and then the facility. Once again, the balloon, and then the facility. Right here, and right here. So, and just so you know, the balloon that's flown is a typically a three-foot diameter red balloon, so that way, you know, they can see it and they create the simulations. So with that, I think we'll turn it back over to First Selectman, and if you have any question.
I am going to, before we get to questions, thank you. We will listen to a couple of comments and a report. I'm going to start with a report from the town engineer, and it was directed to our town planner. And can everybody here okay? I know there's other things going on outside, but everything is okay. All right. Dear Mrs. Rhodes, as requested, we have reviewed the following information for the subject project. Item 1, a letter from Daniel Lob of Cuddy &amp; Feder to Susan Bransfield dated August 11, 2014. Item 2, set of three letter-sized plates titled "Lease Exhibit S3477E," Portland Rosehill Road, 9 Rosehill Road, Portland, including property plan, site plan, and compound plan sheets 1, 2, and 3 of 4 dated October 28, 2013, prepared by Chapel Engineering Associates, LLC. And item 3, two-page document titled "Visibility Analysis," Portland Rosehill Road, Portland, Connecticut, Middlesex County, dated July 2014, prepared by All Points Technology Corporation of Killingworth, Connecticut. As you are aware, residential properties located at the base of Collins Hill, along the east side of Rosehill Road and Collins Hill Road, and in particularly immediately to the north and south of the Bartlett Street intersection, have experienced severe drainage problems. Since these properties are directly down gradient of the proposed, quote, "access area," end quote, "equipment compound," end quote, we are concerned with any proposed improvements that would increase surface runoff, and would therefore recommend that existing surface conditions be maintained to the greatest extent possible, and that appropriate mitigation measures be employed to ensure that there is no increase in surface runoff. We have the following general comments in this regard. Number 1, sheet 1 of 4 and item 2 above appears to indicate that access to the equipment compound will follow the route of the existing paved golf cart path. However, there is no indication whether any widening of the existing golf cart path will occur in order to accommodate vehicles and equipment necessary for both the construction as well as further service of this facility.
Good evening. It is now 7:30. The library will be closing this evening in one half hour. Thank you.
We don't close, so we will stay open. Given existing drainage problems, we would be opposed to any widening of the existing golf cart course path with pavement or other impervious surface. A possible alternative, if widening is deemed to be necessary, might be some type of modular grid system that would provide structural support for wheel loadings and maintain the existing grass structure and runoff characteristics. A similar-type treatment should also be utilized where a gravel drive is proposed to extend in a southerly direction from the existing golf cart path to the proposed equipment compound. Number 2, within the equipment compound, we would recommend that impervious surfaces be limited in size to the greatest extent possible, and that they be connected to subsurface infiltration chambers located in an area with suitable subsurface conditions. Size to accommodate the increase in surface runoff from a 100-year storm event. In addition, any remaining area within the compound that cannot, for operational purposes, be re-vigitated should be surfaced with crushed stone to promote infiltration into the underlying soil structure. Should you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact me. Jeffrey Jacobson, professional engineer with Nathan Jacobson Associates of Chester. And then I had one telephone call from Mr. Bill Larson, who was unable to be here tonight. Bill Larson is from 171 Bartlett Street, and he had just one comment, and that is that no additional water be put on the adjoining properties as a result of any structure. And then the second item that I have is as follows. Dear Susan, attached is a petition opposing 9 Rosehill Road as the site for the proposed cell phone tower. This was circulated only to residents on Collins Hill, only the neighbors closest to the only the neighbors closest to the site on Rose Hill Road, and a few on Upper Bartlett Street Extension. Some residents were not available. Of the ones contacted, all signed, except for a few, who were undecided or were in favor of the site. Please make clear this was not circulated throughout the town. And I will read to you the petition. Cuddy and Feder, representing New Singular Wireless PCS, is currently considering the installation of an 80-foot-tall cell tower to be located at Nine Rose Hill Road in Portland, adjacent to the Quarry Ridge Golf Course. We are strongly opposed to the installation of the tower for the following reasons. Whereas the neighborhood is strictly residential with two golf courses, with no commercial aspect, as stated in the April 7, 2014, Cutter, Cuddy, and Feder letter. Therefore, this neighborhood is not conducive to a commercial cell phone tower. Whereas the current real estate market is very fragile and reacts to any perceived adverse effect. An installation of a cell phone tower in this neighborhood will cause property values to decline even further than they already have, and will affect homeowners in the surrounding properties as well as the local real estate market. Whereas the development of Quarry Ridge driveway, Quarry Ridge Golf Course, and more recently, the paving of a driveway that was to remain gravel has increased the flow of groundwater runoff, thereby causing serious drainage problems to surrounding property owners. And whereas the paving of the gravel driveway that was to remain gravel has resulted in a major lawsuit between the Town of Portland and the owner of the paved driveway. This lawsuit affects many surrounding property owners, is ongoing, and therefore unresolved. Whereas the 12-foot-wide, 650-foot-long road that is proposed to access the site and the development of the land for the tower will require the cutting of many mature trees and major excavation would cause even more groundwater runoff than already exists. Whereas no engineering studies have been completed stating the effect this project would have on surrounding properties and what the groundwater calculations would be. Whereas 25 A.M. JUR 2D, Easements and Licenses, Section 76, states, "When a drainage easement exists, surface water may be drained from the same area as that at the time the easement was originally granted." Krukowski versus Glastonbury, 16 Connecticut, I believe it's Superior, 24, '27 through '28, 1948. "But the drainage area may not be enlarged. The proposed project would involve at least two easements. Whereas an 80-foot tower is incompatible with the neighborhood aesthetics. This is an upscale residential neighborhood, and although the tower is intended to resemble a tree, it is clearly not one and would be an eyesore. Whereas curtain scientific research does not yet provide clear evidence that radio frequency radiation from cell phone towers poses a health risk, research in this field is ongoing. The FCC standards were established in 1996, and the data used at that time are outdated. The World Health Organization has labeled RF a possible carcinogen, and says further studies need to be done. In 2009, a meta-study conducted by seven scientists in five countries concluded that health effects from RF occur at exposure levels many orders of magnitude below existing public safety standards, and that children are affected more strongly than adults. For the sake of the many children who live in this neighborhood, we should err on the side of caution where potential health issues are concerned. Therefore, for all the above reasons, we respectfully and adamantly request that the proposal to install this cell phone tower be denied." Now, I don't know if you want me to read all these names, but I will, so I will. Sharon Hoy, Bill Evellou Ellison? I can't read that name. I think it says Evellou. Evison, thank you. Amy Evison, Eileen LaPrince, Bill Larson, Evelyn Larson, Brett Salafia, Elizabeth Salafia, Ramiro De Souza, Kirsten Westler, John Sobsec, Catherine Ray, Jillian Kapaline, Jamison Kapaline, Connie Degolovski, Al Degolenski, Michael Corpio, Jamie Corpio, Joseph Story, Audrey Brady, Mike Kala, Joyce Murphy, Carolyn Freeman, David Freeman, Mark Chester, Kelly Chester, Sandra Pinto, Melissa Satijay, Sandy Favalli, David Favalli, Rita Nicky, Sean Quinn, Bonnie Quinn, Jeff Spooner, Amy Spooner, Ruth McGowan, Richard Pastrito, Carolyn Persinet, Jason Piris, Susan Kenny, Conrad Hank, Linda Hank, Philip Hoy, Eileen Sullivan, John Sullivan, Matt Roman, maybe Romano, I'm not sure, Chris Nolan, Ellen Nolan, Julie Nolan, Tim Nolan, Lynn Nolan, Susan Pastrito, and David Pellet. Now, all of these names are people who live in Portland, and all of their addresses are listed here. I know most of them. I do know that just about everybody does live in Portland. And that is all that I have for written comments tonight. So, as we do for our public information and public hearings, I start on one section of the room, and we go to each aisle. And if you have comment or questions, raise your hand. And as I said earlier, if you could go to the microphone and let everybody know your name and address, our recording secretary will take that down. So we're going to start with the first row here. And we'll go to the second row, and the third row. Sharon?
Sharon Hoy, 33 Rose Hill Road in Portland. I have a prepared letter that was written before this meeting, so some of the questions and some of the things that are expressed may have already been answered. Although there is a need for better cellphone reception in some areas, the tower proposed for Nine Rose Hill Road is not an appropriate location. This is an upscale residential neighborhood with two golf courses and with no commercial business. The real estate market is very fragile and has already been stagnated, resulting in lower prices due to a sluggish economy. As a real estate agent, I have seen buyers lose interest in a house that is for sale as soon as they see things like a high-power line, a water tank, a gas line, and yes, even a cellphone tower nearby. Whether right or wrong, there is growing concern about possible health hazards resulting from tower emissions. Any house in close proximity to this proposed cellphone tower could see a devaluation of their property. A Cuddy and Feder letter dated April 7, 2014 indicated that several other locations were considered for the tower, and this has been answered. I would like to know where those parcels are and why they weren't selected. Since there will be income for the owner of the land on which the tower resides, it would make good business sense to have the tower located on the town land so that the town would benefit from the revenue. This could result in a savings that could be passed on to the taxpayer so everyone could benefit. If all town property locations have not been considered, I hereby request that the applicant work with the town to explore the opportunity of using one of the town parcels as a tower site. Although I am not an expert, I understand that the proposed site is the habitat for some endangered species. This needs to be studied, and if that is the case, we should not disturb this natural habitat. My biggest objection to the proposed location is groundwater runoff, not only on our property but also on other neighboring properties. We owned our property since 1980 and never had a water problem until the Quarry Ridge Drive and Golf Course were developed. With acres of trees removed, massive excavation, and paved drives, and parking lots, the groundwater impacting our property has increased tremendously. Although we have never seen, never seen the Quarry Ridge Drive drainage plan, we believe that many, if not all, catch basins on the Quarry Ridge Drive collect the water from north and west of our land. It then goes underneath the road and discharges directly onto our property. There is no defined channel, so the water goes helter-skelter causing major erosion until it reaches a swale, and then goes into a town right-of-way, ending up in a catch basin on Rose Hill Road. What is interesting is that the golf course owns the land right next to ours, but instead of the water being channeled through that land, it is discharged onto our property. Why this was allowed by the town, we don't know. I am attaching a copy of a letter dated July 11, 1991, from Jeffrey Jacobson of Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates, to Raymond Carpentino, in which he expressed concern about the discharge from the existing culvert onto our property. And I quote, "Runoff to the Hoy property includes the overflow from the quarry as well as overland flow below the quarry. After development of the golf course, the area directly to the south of the quarry, which previously flowed overland to the Hoy property, will be diverted to the quarry. This diversion, along with the construction of the proposed dam, will serve to attenuate flows." To the best of my knowledge, this did not happen, and if it did, it did not solve the water problem since the groundwater runoff has been greatly increased. Now, fast forward to 2013, in a situation that has compounded an existing, an already-existing water problem. When a house was built with the address known as One Rose Hill Road, there was a stipulation it must have a gravel driveway to minimize groundwater runoff. This was the case until the summer of 2013, when the property owner paved the driveway. There is a catch basin at the bottom of this drive that collects the water from his property and driveway. Now, the water from the One Rose Hill driveway, mixed with the water collected from the golf course, the parking lots, and other paved areas, is collected in a number of catch basins on Quarry Ridge Drive. All of this water continues southward to our property, and then goes under, under the road and discharges directly onto our land, resulting in major erosion. This has increased groundwater runoff to a dangerous level. I refer you to photos attached to this letter of a summer storm on August 30, 2013. All of the catch basins on that newly paved driveway, as well as all of the other catch basins on Quarry Ridge Drive, could not accommodate the water, which then flooded our land and ended up flooding Rose Hill Road. Surrounding property owners had similar situations, one in which the whitewater was shaking their propane tanks so badly that their safety was at risk. When a situation becomes this serious, it requires immediate attention. However, that did not happen. From what I understand, there is now an unresolved lawsuit between the owner of One Rose Hill Road in the Town of Portland. In the meantime, the water continues to be a problem to us as well as some of our neighbors. This will become even more of a problem if there is a severe storm that occurs in the winter when the ground is frozen, and little, if any, of the groundwater runoff can be absorbed into the ground. This being said, the proposed 12-foot-wide road and 650-long tower-access road from Quarry Ridge Drive to the location of the proposed cellphone tower will undoubtedly result in road excavation and the cutting of many more trees. The cellphone tower project has the potential for causing even greater water problems for the neighborhood, and this is totally unacceptable. Into, in the winter with snowstorms and with the groundwater runoff causing icing conditions on Quarry Ridge Drive, it will make it difficult, if not impossible, to plow and deal with the icing conditions. If that happens, how would the tower site be accessed for service, repair, or an emergency, such as a fire or medical emergency? I would like to quote from case law, Taylor versus Conti, 149 Connecticut, 174 Supreme Court, 1962. "A landowner cannot use or improve his land so as to increase the volume of the surface waters which flow from it onto the land of others, nor can he discharge surface waters from his land onto the land of others in a different course from their natural flow if by so doing he causes substantial damage." This is exactly what has happened, and will continue to happen to a greater degree if the cellphone tower application is approved. In my letter to Susan Bransfield and the Board of Selectmen dated May 29, 2014, the following questions were asked, for which we would appreciate answers. How many trees will be cut, and how much land will be disturbed by excavation to build the access road? How much additional groundwater runoff will this cause? Has the town engineer or the appropriate body done a groundwater study to learn the impact this access road will have on groundwater runoff to the surrounding properties and compound the problems that already exist? We believe this should be done before application is made to the Siding Council. Who will be responsible for correcting the existing groundwater runoff problems and any additional problems caused during or after the tower-access road construction? The applicant, the golf course owner, the town, or the paved driveway owner? Who will be responsible for road maintenance, both on Quarry Ridge Drive and the access road to the tower? Will this continue to be a private road, or will the town take it over at some point? I'm almost done. Well, it was thought that emissions from towers were not harmful to the surrounding residents. Now, there are many articles indicating that the radiation has caused, has caused major health concerns affiliated with these towers. I quote the following from one such article. "The threat comes from the constant nature of the activity of the towers. They emit pulse radio frequency radiation. This radiation has been shown in thousands of studies to cause biological damage to the body and to be a precursor to disease." It then goes on to identify some of the dangers besides cancer associated with emissions from the cellphone towers, including genetic mutations, memory disruptions, hindered learning, ADD, insomnia, brain disorders, hormonal imbalances, infertility, dementia, and heart complications. For all of the above reasons, Nine Rose Hill Road is not an appropriate location for this tower. I am hereby requesting that any and all Portland town officials involved in this matter, the applicant, and especially the Siding Council, be given all verbal comments and written communications from this meeting, and any verbal or written communications from subsequent sessions. It is important that the applicant and the Siding Council have all documentation and the history surrounding the site in order to make their decision. Sincerely, Phil and Sharon Hoy.
Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else in Row Three? David?
Hi, I'm David Favalli, I live on Collins Hill Road. Just a couple of quick questions. I would be curious why the tower location was considered near the golf course, and then your mind was changed, why it wasn't placed there? And then if any study's been done about what something like this does to property values. I can see it would have some value if we had no cellphone service whatsoever. A tower in the area would be nice. But, I mean, even I have AT&amp;T, and I have great coverage where I am. And I'm probably the closest one to the proposed tower. So, those are the only two questions or issues I would have.
I think what we'll do, thanks, David, is, after we finish with this side of the room, if the presenters wanted to address any of the questions, we can. Okay, so you're keeping notes. Thank you. So that was Row Three. Anybody else in Row Three? Sharon, you already had it.
Yeah, I had two questions, it was a result of their presentation.
Okay.
The one is...
Sharon, if you could, so that everyone could hear you.
Certainly.
Sharon Hoy, 33 Rose Hill Road. The photos that you showed us were all taken during, when the leaves were on the trees. What will this look at, the other six months of the year, whenever there's no leaves on the trees? With the, so I believe it was a 50-by-50-foot square, it sounds like there's going to be quite an area, quite an area that would show from other locations, on Rose Hill Road, Fairway Drive, Ames Hollow. And it...
Hill Road, Fairway Drive, Ames Hollow, and it, I would be interested to know if that is going to be not a very good thing to look at. And then the other question is, the proposed tower is going to be now eighty-five foot high. If that is the case, will there be an opportunity for expansion at some later time for other cellphone towers in the same site, as well as an additional height being added to the eighty-five feet?
Thank you. Anyone else in row three? The next row, four? You're standing? So, no more comments on this half of the room. My left, your right. Did you want to make any comments to the questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Just very briefly, I'm not going to go in any particular order. With respect to the comment about leaf-on visibility, for the Connecticut Siting Council, for that process, we would have to evaluate what we call leaf-off conditions as well. And depending upon when the application's filed and when the siting council schedules a hearing, there'll be a balloon float on the day of that hearing as well. So, additional visibility studies would be done. With respect to the compound, Mike, I don't anticipate visibility of the compound. Is that accurate? Do you want to maybe address that?
Yeah. The, just so everyone understands, I know you saw, oh, I'm sorry, Mike Libertine, with all points of technology, I was responsible for the visibility analysis that's been submitted to date. I want to go back to, one of the slides, the engineering slides, showed the schematic for the, what they call the tower profile. That's a little misleading, because what we really try to show there is the, it's really just a caricature to show you where the placement of antennas can go, the underlying monopole. My biggest point here is, the entire facility from some point will be in faux branches. So, it's not going to be just spaced around the pole where the antennas are, as you see there. But more importantly, first, to answer the question about the fifty by fifty-foot compound, that's the base compound at the bottom here. The pole itself is about, well, with a monopole, they usually are about six feet in diameter at the base, and they taper up to about three and a half feet at the top of the tree, or the tree pole. So, where this is located, and this may answer some of the gentleman's question about why this site was selected as opposed to the site up, I think you meant up where it was introduced, up by the parking lot in that area. I can't speak to the preference of the property owners, but I can say, from my perspective, one of the reasons I really liked this location was because it's really buried in the middle of dense woods, and it's a pretty good mix of hardwoods as well as some conifers up there. But more importantly, the trees up in that area on the top of the ridge line are pretty substantial in height. They're all in the seventy, seventy-five foot range, some topping out close to ninety feet. So, from my perspective, looking at it from a visibility standpoint, I like the idea of having all of that screening and buffer. And to get to your point, ma'am, the fifty by fifty-foot compound is really the tallest structure in that particular base area, is eleven feet tall, and that's the top of their equipment shelter that goes within there. So, from anything really off of the Golf Course property, you're not going to see any of the base. As a matter of fact, from the work we've done to date, really, most of the views are from the west side, looking back east, as we had presented, and really just looking at the top ten or fifteen feet above the trees. Now, you make a good point. Once the leaves come off the deciduous trees, obviously, things open up a little bit. My guess is because, again, because of its location, and we'll be able to verify this in another, probably, six or seven weeks, you're going to see probably a little bit more of the conifer-style tree. But again, the reason we are camouflaging it is because we have a great setting here. It's a relatively low tower, so it's actually going to look somewhat natural. I'm sure everyone has gone around and driven and seen some of the monstrosities that are out there, some of the early versions, and I think if you say, you know, the Hutchinson Parkway, everyone kind of goes, "Oh, gasp, that's the one I know." Interesting thing about that, I will agree with you, if you're on the Hutchinson Parkway and you drive by that, you go, "What were they thinking?" But if you drive to the north into the neighborhoods from which that is supposed to do the screening, it actually works not too bad, because it sets into the backdrop of the surrounding trees. If you stick a pole of a hundred feet, or even, in this case, eighty-five feet, somebody's going to see it. There's just, you know, we can't make them invisible. But, the idea is to try to really find the right setting and get it in a proper placement, proper height, and in this case, try to use some type of camouflaging that will work. I think this is a good site from that perspective. Will you see it from those locations, generally to the west on Bartlett Street and the Golf Course and those neighboring roads? There are going to be some locations like we've shown where, yeah, you're going to see the top of the facility, there's no question about it.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. The other issue that I want to address briefly was the concerns about the runoff and existing conditions, and we did get the comments from the town engineer. So, as we go through the process, and this is why these information meetings are very helpful, this is the kind of information that we take into account when we're designing our facility. We are proposing to use the existing driveway and golf cart, so existing access ways. I'm not sure how much more we're going to extend that. It's not very long. Is that correct, Jay?
Three hundred feet.
It's about three hundred feet, and so the extension, it would be an extension off the existing golf cart path, about three hundred feet, and that would be a gravel surface. But those kinds of engineering reviews and calculations and so forth will be done as part of the siting council process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to this side of the room. First row? Any comments or questions? Second row? Watch your step, there's cords there. Thank you.
My name's Jenny Quinn. I live on four Greenview Drive, and as I was listening to the presentation, I just had a question. And forgive me, I was writing feverishly, and I don't know if I have the right terminology, but you had mentioned in one of your graphs that the amount of, I guess, radio frequency radiation that will be admitted from your tower is twelve point three six percent of the one hundred percent federal guidelines, and you also indicated that more than one company can go onto your tower? So, is that twelve point three six, the total amount that will be with that tower for its life, or as other companies kind of attach on? Will that increase? And is there a cutoff? And questions about that?
Thank you. As I said, we'll answer the questions after all of them are presented, if that's okay. Anybody else in row two? Row three? The next row, four? George?
I'm George Law. I reside at sixty-four Rose Hill Road, which is not far from the site, but I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of clients of mine. I'm a lawyer here in town, and I represent John Kelly and Christina Kelly, who reside at One Rose Hill Road, which is directly next to the site. Yeah, I brought a map and I drew on it. I just want to show, if I can here briefly, Mr. and Mrs. Kelly's property, is this property that's outlined in pink here? Is the property that's outlined in pink here, is this bizarrely shaped property?
Can everybody see? You know what, George? Maybe the middle, or what do you think?
I'll play the end of white.
There we go. That's good. Thank you.
So, Mr. and Mrs. Kelly's property is the property outlined in pink, and I've drawn on where I approximate their houses. You see, no, over, I'm sorry. Not the pink stripes, just the pink parcel right here. So, it comes up, this is their frontage, and this is their property. I drew the house on. I think it's relatively accurate as to the location, but I just point out, that's not going to scale that. That was what I put on there. I'll just briefly, while I'm over here, show you, the green outlined parcel is Quarry Ridge, and it extends further, further out here. This pink-lined property is property that's owned by Jarvis Penfield. It's not owned by the Golf Course here. And then the Hoyes property is right next to it. This parcel in the center, again, outlined by green, is the Golf Course property. And where I put the green circle here is the alternate site on the Golf Course property for this cellphone tower. The green-lined property over here is the site where the tower is being proposed as of right now. So, if you look at that, look for perhaps the Favallis and some of the Nolan clan over here, the Kelly's house is as close as any to that property. So, it's this. It's this.
It's an old house. Does it represent the current?
This is the parcel on which the property is. This parcel was conveyed over Quarry Ridge before it was conveyed to the current owner. Then the current owner purchased this property, or one of the current owners of Quarry Ridge Golf Course, purchased this property in two thousand and six, not at the time that he purchased the Golf Course. It's a woodlot that he purchased following the purchase of the Golf Course. And that's the assessor's map and lot number that we're referred to earlier. So, Mr. and Mrs. Kelly, as the Favallis and other neighbors, I'm sure, are very concerned about the location of the present, you know, site for this structure, for a number of reasons, and their paramount concern, as I'm sure everybody's, is health. And, you know, for all the research that can be done, and I don't purport to have done it, nor do I purport to be the person who would have the knowledge to opine on it, but there are no answers. And while there are no answers that say it's bad for you, there are no answers that say it's not for you. And in fact, everything that I've researched said, there are no answers. There has not been adequate time to research this issue. These cellphone towers haven't been around that long. As we heard in the presentation, we're going from, I don't remember the numbers, but like one to fifteen. I mean, the increased use and the increased frequency in radiation from these towers is unknown, and the results of that from a health perspective are also unknown. So, that's a paramount concern to my clients. Secondary to that, although also important, are the aesthetics, the appearance of this thing to their property, the noise that's potentially going to come from, I presume there will be generators, so if there are power outages, the structure can continue to run. Those generators have to raise noise. And then, of course, all of the concerns of the construction of the tower. If there is an extension of the driveway, and I would suggest it's not rational to think that they're going to use the existing, you know, what, five and a half foot wide golf cart, that golf cart's barely fit on, to bring in heavy equipment, you know, to build this structure, and then heavy equipment to maintain it. It doesn't make sense. There's going to need to be substantial improvements. There's going to need to be utilities brought out there, which, again, you know, the Kelly's built their house there in a similar situation. They had to blast to put their utilities in. So, I would imagine that that's something that's going to have to be done when this structure goes in as well. Now, all of this being said, my mother always used to say, "Don't complain about a problem if you don't have a solution." The alternate site on this property is in the center of this property. So, if this property owner wants to facilitate the construction of a cell tower on his property, that's fine, but don't do it to the detriment of the neighbors, whose yard, for all practical purposes you're putting it in, when you can put it in the center of your property and it will have virtually no impact on neighbors. You know, everybody, not in my backyard, but if you're the property owner who's going to cause the construction of this, well, how about in your backyard? Not to mention, the cost of bringing utilities to it, you know, are minimal. There's a utility easement, there's existing utilities right to that spot, and there's no need to extend any further roads. There's a parking lot there, access to the spot is immediate. That being said, I think the bigger issue, frankly, that needs to be faced here is, this woodlot on which this property, or the structure is being proposed, is not part of the Quarry Ridge parcel as purchased. It's a woodlot that came, was purchased, secondly, and independent of the Quarry Ridge property, and does not enjoy the same easement rights that the Quarry Ridge Golf Course does over my client's property, over Penfield, Jarvis Penfield, Jarvis' property, and over the Hoyes property. There are cross easements, which are reflected here in the yellow, and again, a straight-up utility easement that brings utilities straight up to the property. And if you look at these deeds, which I have, the owners, you know, the Kelly's at their lot, the Golf Course, and the owner of this property, all have cross easements over this property to access their properties. But the easement rights that come with Quarry Ridge Golf Course, the parcel that was sold to Quarry Ridge Golf Course, do not extend to the parcel where you are proposing to construct this site. And therefore, there is no access to a tenant to this property, to go and construct the property, as there would be here. Those easement rights are, you know, run in favor of Quarry Ridge over these other lots to access the Quarry Ridge property, and therefore, a structure here is nothing that can be, you know, denied access to. And in fact, you know, we propose that that's a reasonable site for it. The only reason, according to the plan that was submitted, that that site was not considered is the owner of the property declined it. So, he's declining to have it in the middle of this property where utilities can easily be brought, where there's access. No need to add any further, you know, pavement that's going to cause additional water runoff, you know, potentially. It's there and ready to go, in the middle of his property, not impacting any of the surrounding neighbors. And not to mention, he's got access rights to this property to install it. He does not to this property. And look to the deed to this property, it's a separate woodlot purchased from a separate person. It simply does not have easement rights, and they can't be created by the fact that it's been purchased by the same person. So, my clients oppose the construction of the site tower at this lot for the reasons said. We think that constructing it over here, the other site that was considered in the site plan, makes perfect sense. It's in the middle of the Golf Course, but it can be camouflaged there as well. I think it's near the thirteenth green, if I'm correct, and, you know, nobody plays into the parking lot there the way they do with the course below. So, I think it's an appropriate site there. And I'm just being candid, my clients will oppose it. I think they're in very good standing to deny access to this lot by virtue of the way the easement language exists in the deeds for all of these properties. Thank you, dear.
Thank you, George. Anyone else in the, one moment, I just wanted to ask the back row, Mr. Sataj, if you could just, is there anybody else that's seated? Bob?
Sure, thank you.
There is a hand up, or no? Mark, did you raise your hand?
I don't see one.
Oh, okay. You're waving.
Hello, Robert Sataj, one eleven Collins Hill, Portland. And I am, the irony's pretty unbelievable for Ms. Law to get up here and talk about how that water construction's going to impact his client's property when we're here a few months ago, arguing against his client doing the exact same thing with his driveway, which hasn't been addressed yet. So, and Sharon, thanks for doing a great job with that petition and your comments, and, you know, and there you mentioned unbelievably, the town hasn't done anything yet. The situation still goes on. We're talking about water, but yet we're playing with fire. Additional construction up there to put that cell tower in is any upsetting of what's currently up there could have devastating effects for the residents below. It's already a grave situation, so when you're getting large trucks to go up there, doing any adjustments to the landscape up there, it could be, prove to be very hazardous and perilous, and that's going to, you know, puts the town at risk. And the situation, the cell tower owner, you know, is in a position now, or the proposed cell tower, is in a position to correct it, to do something about that water. You know, it's probably a result of the Golf Course being put in incorrectly in the first place, which the town was probably involved with. You know, it's an effect of not following policies and procedures correctly the first time, and these are the results. They just keep on cascading and escalating, and we're seeing the results of that now. It's just getting worse and worse. So, the owner of that property, you know, the town engineer is aware of how that water comes down the back of that hill, the seventy-five foot ledge, comes across that new driveway up there, which will probably erode in another couple of years from that water, but he can certainly redirect it, that water to drainage pipes on that property. And why it hasn't been addressed in such a long time is incomprehensible. So, but any additional changes to that property, I've been up there million, many times. Sue, I'm sure you've walked the property. Sue, I'm sure you've walked the property there. I hope you have, taken a look, take ownership of this problem. We need a leader to help us with this and not say it's private property, I can't go up there, because it's getting passed back and forth like a hot potato here. So I hope you listen to the residents. We've come to the town meetings many times, spoken to you directly. We all know about that problem, where it directly emanates from. There's drainage systems on that golf course property where that water can be directed to, resolve a lot of the issues. But any further construction up there, changes to the golf cart, there is a swale up there where all that water pulls up and collects, and it's sort of a sink. And you're going to ride heavy equipment over there and alter that. It's going to increase that water significantly down that hill. And somebody's going to get, you know, potentially could get injured from it. And we don't want to see, you know, then the town becomes liable and creates more problems. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Are you ready for the comments?
I just wanted to quickly address the question regarding the maximum permissible exposure. That number, that twelve point three six percent, was for AT&amp;T. And as you know, it's proposed for co-locators. So let's say another wireless carrier, let's say the site got built, another wireless carrier was seeking to co-locate on that tower. They would have to take, they'd have to do the same calculation. However, they'd have to take AT&amp;T into account. So they would have to do a cumulative calculation and demonstrate to the sighting council, who has jurisdiction over this, that they meet the standard. So any carrier that comes on to another facility has to do that cumulative calculation and make sure that altogether, you're still under that one hundred percent. It rarely ever does. I think, Sarah, oh, yes. Dan, maybe if you want to talk a little bit about that, just from your experience?
Dan Goulet, representing AT&amp;T. I'm with Sea Squid Systems out of Auburn, New Hampshire. We have sites that have, in addition to five carriers, they have public safety, police, they could have an FM radio station on it. This particular site, they're showing a five-carrier pole. It is my strong opinion that it's very unlikely that five carriers will go on that because of the ten-foot spacing. The pole is only eighty feet high, eighty-five with the branches. So the first carrier's at eighty. The next center line available is seventy. And as you heard earlier from Mr. Libertine, the trees in that area are over seventy feet tall. So there's not going to be a third carrier that's going to want to be buried at sixty feet, or a fourth carrier at fifty feet, and be below the tree line because the signal's not going to propagate. Even if there was, as was mentioned earlier, the sighting council looks at all of these, but it has never been the case that a five carriers on a pole would exceed a hundred percent. We're showing, in this calculation, twelve point three percent, and that includes the technologies that, some of the technologies that AT&amp;T will be potentially taking off the air. As these technologies come out, they're lower power than the parent technologies, I'll call them, or the previous technologies. So that's the issue with these. They're very low power, so that people aren't using up a lot of their batteries on their phones, and the service lasts longer. And so for that reason, if I added another carrier, and even if I went up and said that one's going to be fifteen percent, well, that's twenty-seven percent. I add a third carrier, who's now down at sixty feet in the trees, say that's another fifteen percent. Well, now I'm still under fifty percent. And keep in mind that that calculation is at, if you're standing at the base of the tower with the antennas aimed at the ground, that doesn't happen. Once you move ten feet away, we've gone out and done measurements. We do it all the time. We have some pretty sophisticated equipment. It's FCC type accepted, and we will go to an area, a tower, a building, a rooftop, and we will actually take measurements of the emissions. And ninety percent of the time, the levels that we record are below the minimum level for that meter where it's a hundred percent accurate. So, and they're always much lower than what we run the calculations at, because this is worst-case scenario. This is assuming every single channel is on the air at full power for every single technology, all within the same timeframe. And that very rarely occurs.
I just wanted to thank you for having us this evening and giving us this opportunity, and thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing that information with us.
Excuse me, you didn't answer my question regarding whether that tower could be a higher level? And also, can the other towers in town provide service to the same area to make their service?
With respect to height, yes, it could get taller. If another carrier, let's say that the site is built, it's approved and it's built. If another carrier needed a higher height and wanted to extend it, they would have to demonstrate to the sighting council that they needed that taller height and go to the sighting council for approval on that. With respect to the existing towers, I did have a map up that showed where AT&amp;T is located on all the existing towers. And none of them could provide service to that white area on the maps. The first thing that AT&amp;T does when they identify an area that needs service is to see if they can use existing infrastructure. It makes a lot more sense, and it's a lot more efficient, to place a facility on an existing structure, whether it's a tower, or water tank, or a tall building, than to build a new one. So that's the first thing they do. And unfortunately, the existing towers in town don't provide service to this area.
Any other questions or comments tonight? Yes, Mrs. Nolan?
Pat Nolan from Seventeen Wildwood Road, the Nolan clan, as you said. And we have lots of kids and all. What I'm concerned about is that twelve point three six, do they put that in? We also deal with power lines that go through there, the high-power lines. Do the two of them put together? Do they, is that something CL&amp;P and the tower works with? Does that add to your twelve point?
They're not cumulative unless they were in, we situated the tower.
Sir, would you mind going to, I'm sorry, to the microphone? Thanks. Otherwise, we won't pick up your answer. And every answer is as important as every question.
If the tower were situated at the tension lines?
It's like this. We can see it from our house, how power lines, gas line and the tower.
I mean, actually, at the transmission lines, I think, because we have the mapping of where the transmission lines are compared to the tower, the proposed location, and they're a good distance away. We can put that up again if you would like.
No, I just wanted to know if it was...
They don't mix and create greater. If the tower and the antennas, the signals that we're putting out, for example, if we went on one of those transmission poles, which is done, carriers do stick there, and then you would, yes, you would include that. We would have to take a measurement to find the actual reading. But they don't combine and amplify, if that's what you're asking.
Maybe they ought to do it.
It doesn't work that way.
The neighborhood does it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon?
In my letter...
Thank you.
In my letter, I asked what the other locations were that had been considered by the applicant and why they weren't appropriate for the tower, and that wasn't answered.
That was actually part of the presentation, and it was information that was provided in the technical report. What AT&amp;T looked at was the existing power lines there, the existing CL&amp;P infrastructure. And I had a slide up that showed the topography and why those didn't work. The RF engineers analyzed that and determined that it wouldn't, they wouldn't work, the existing structures. So that's the first thing that they looked at.
Are there other sites in town that would accommodate the tower?
None that we know of. It would have to be in that area. If there's, you know, that area that we showed on the plots where service is needed. I'm not aware of any town-owned property in that area. We can certainly take another look and see. But it's a pretty limited geographic area where we would have to look to provide service.
I certainly make any information available to you that you need. Is Rick here? I don't know of any, not in the immediate vicinity.
I don't have that plan.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments tonight, George?
Just one question for clarification purposes?
Yes.
And maybe I misheard, but the other sites that were considered were ruled out for varying reasons. The other site up at Quarry Ridge was ruled out because the property owner didn't want it.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I interject?
Yes, Mr. Nolan?
I am the property owner, and it was not just my whimsical desire to put it there. It was mainly visibility. If put in that parking lot, it would be much more visible. At eighty-four, I put Tower in the parking lot, would be visible all the way to Farmington on the northwest, or northwest, and Glastonbury on the northeast. The views, if you go up, be my guest, come and take a look at the views from, you know, the top of the golf course, and you can see the Yukon Health Center, you know, and you can see over to homes on the top of hills in Glastonbury. The visibility would be greatly increased.
Mike, just for the record...
And I think, I don't want to speak for AT&amp;T, I think that they thought the proposed site was better situated for the particular area that they wanted to reach.
Mike, could you, just for the recording secretary for the record, state your name and address?
My name is Michael Milano. I reside at 167 Cox Road, and I'm the owner of Quarry Ridge Golf Course.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments? Okay, we're going to close the public... I'm sorry, Sharon.
Sharon Hoy, Thirty-three Rose Hill. What about the area up where the power lines are? Could that be an appropriate location, it's in that same vicinity? And also, are there any state-owned land that it can reside on in the same area?
I'm not aware of any state-owned land in that vicinity, but we can certainly take a look and see. Like I said, it's a limited geographic area. I do know any, and I don't believe there are any state parks in that area, but we would be precluded from sighting in a state park. The CL&amp;P lines that I showed on that topographic map, because of their location at a much lower elevation, anything there would not work for AT&amp;T, but we can certainly take a look and see if there are other properties in the area.
David?
Just real quick, Mike, and don't think I'm putting you on the spot, I just want to understand. You didn't want it up on the top because of the visibility from the people out there looking in? Like from Farmington and Glastonbury? I get the great views, I love it up there. But is that the visibility you're talking about, from the people out there that would see it, looking towards the course? Or did I just not understand?
No, it was just immediately obvious that the tower would be visible farther in all directions at that location. It would not be in the middle of the woods. It would be a tower visible from top to bottom, where in the woods now, as they said, the trees from seventy feet and below, even in the wintertime, since it's quite deep in the woods, would be, you know, obscuring any view of the lower parts of the tower. And you saw the slides on what it would look like in the summer.
Susan? Ruth?
I think the perfect example...
One person at a time. We'll give you a chance. This is Ruth McAllen.
Forty-two Collins Hill Road. Where did the balloon go up? On which piece of property? Was it the golf course, or was it...
That would be a question for...
There, sorry.
This gentleman?
Mr. Peralta. It is golf course property, but I don't know specifically the lot. I think that's all been kind of condensed into the, or at least incorporated into the golf course proper.
Was, I guess the question, where was the balloon placed?
It's right where the tower was.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we went into the woods to the actual center line of where it's proposed.
What it's proposed, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. Yes. We snaked it up, we did actually snake it up through the existing trees.
So before I get to you, this is late...
Well, we lost a couple on the way up.
What I want to do, we do this with all our public hearings, we go to the podium and ask the question or the comment. It keeps everybody given the same opportunity, so we don't have a back and forth. We go up to the podium and ask your question. Did you want to state something? You're sure? Okay. Mr. Nolan?
Tom Nolan, Seventeen Wildwood Road. Somebody mentioned state property. I believe there's a state property with a high, very high elevation right next to engine company number three. That would be a possibility.
You mean the, that's a DEEP site? Is that right, Rick? Yes. Now, that is on Great Hill Road in Portland. Which, how close is that to the site, Rick?
Quite some distance, elevation-wise, it might be similar.
Elevation-wise, it would be similar, but it's not right in the neighborhood. But it is a state-owned parcel, and that's Great Hill Road. It's behind Company Three. We can get you that information. Okay? Thank you.
The density there is much less population-wise.
Sharon?
Has the recycling center been, would that be close enough? And since that's town-owned, would that be an appropriate site?
Yep, that's all for the people to look at. I don't know the elevation of that site. That is certainly a town-owned site. And we can, through the Public Works and the Planning Departments, make available any maps that you need in terms of sighting, as we would do for anyone. Okay? Uh, let's see, I guess you're next, George, and then, is it Mrs. Milano?
No.
No, okay. I won't assume anything. Okay.
And this will be my last, but just again, George Law on behalf of John and Christina Kelly. As for the other site up on Quarry Ridge, which is on Quarry Ridge, and I beg to differ with that it's all golf property, the proposed site is a separately deeded parcel of land. It is not part of Quarry Ridge Golf Course. It does not enjoy the same easement rights as Quarry Ridge Golf Course. However, that being said, Mr. Milano, now that you've heard your neighbors opposing the site next to their properties, perhaps a balloon can be floated in the center of the golf course at this alternate site. I'm hearing there's big concern about the trees blocking lower usage on this tower. If we put it in the parking lot of the golf course, I'm imagining there's no trees blocking any type of radiation coming in and out. I'm imagining there's no trees blocking any type of radiation coming in and out, therefore making the tower a more viable option for anybody who wants to go on there. And we're being told it's going to look like a tree and nobody's going to really notice it. So it doesn't really much matter what the views from out of town are, or for that matter, from the golf course, if it's just going to blend in and look so great. And then it can be used at every level for your transmissions. So I'd like to see a balloon floated there, perhaps maybe, so that that site can be considered. And then, you know, the neighbors whose yard this will actually practically be and will be appeased. And again, I would suggest it's a better site because you would then have access to it.
Thank you, George.
I'm Kathy Fox. And yes, I do live at the same address that Mike Milano lives at. But, and I'm relatively new to Connecticut, so I almost don't have a reason to comment. So I'm listening as a new person here and as an outsider. So I'm just kind of hearing that there's a few other things going on. And so, and I'm understanding as little as I can. It seems like there's another issue about something else with, it sounds like a very serious problem with water drainage. So it sounds like this is a big issue. And then there's something else happening in that same area. And I can, you know, I can imagine the panic. So as this new outsider, I can see how it's feeling like, oh my God, it's going to be more intense. So I'm thinking, well, maybe something should be addressed to, you know, the one thing, and then look at the other and see if, you know, I'm not even finishing my sentences, but I think you get my gist, that it sounds like something out there needs to be addressed first, and then think about the other thing and see if it impacts. And that's...
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Any other comments? If not, I want to thank our presenters. I think many, many questions are answered and more information was shared. It's very much appreciated. As far as the public hearing is concerned, it is now closed. It is 8:32. And you did hear from the presenters, there is additional hearing, should this go forward to the sighting council. And I trust that the applicant will keep information coming to the town. And we'll do our best to make sure that's available to anyone and everyone as we go forward. So we're going to take a brief recess. And again, thank you, everybody, so we can clean up the video and so forth. Thank you.